Good evening, welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, October 1st, 2018. Call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. We please stand and join me in pledging allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. What a dirty day today, huh?
I think it's going to be a little bit.
So we get better tomorrow. And then we got, what, 80 on Wednesday?
Yeah.
And then right here. So.
Nate!
We call, uh, roll, please.
Councilmember Schultz, here. Councilmember Bowe?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Mayor Winchell?
Here.
Uh, moves us on to item four, adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the?
Oh, it's off.
You see how she took it from hers and put it in front of mine? Yeah, by mine.
We're having some audio problems, I guess, so we're trying to get it corrected. Better? One of our two. Oh, 'cause I usually lay mine here to use for a clock, but, okay.
Yeah, you do. Interesting.
All right, um, now I'm kinda, uh, we are at adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, an entertaining motion. We don't need to do anything, right? We're good?
I'll make that motion through.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Bowe.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember, uh, Geisler to adopt the agenda. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to visitor presentation, and I have on here our illustrious water director, Matt Hafner, is gonna talk to us about a award that the water department received.
Award?
He's got, he's got hardware.
Got a couple here.
Oh, and a presentation.
Little.
He doesn't mess around. Don't you have to go down on the bottom in one of them little things to make it full screen? Is that what you want?
Where it's under view and then slideshow?
Slideshow.
If you go to the right, yeah, view.
Somewhere on there. First one, isn't it?
Really icon on the little right.
Or second one.
There's a lot, it looks like a screen there. One more over.
One more over, there it is. There you go. It's a team effort.
Thank you for your help. Uh, Mayor and Council, thanks for having me tonight. So, um, a year ago, we were here and we did a hydrant presentation for you. The guys, uh, worked on a hydrant and went to Nationals, and I'm, uh, happy to say we entered, we've entered, uh, water quality and water taste competitions for, uh, the last few years, and we placed up at Minnesota Rural Water, uh, Association, uh, con, uh, they have a big conference up in St. Cloud. We've, we finished second up there, and then we finished in the top three at Duluth a couple of different times, and so we, we submitted a sample for the first time, uh, at the state fair this year, and I started getting some texts, it was like, uh, August, uh, August 28th, I think was the date, and it was in the Eco Experience, uh, Minnesota Department of Health had a, uh, had a booth in there, and, and just general public could come up and taste water, and there were, um, seventeen total submissions, and, uh, Chaska, Eagan, Apple Valley, and St. Paul were in the final four, and, uh, Chaska and Eagan were in the fi, ended up in the finals, and Chaska won. And so, um, it was a, it was a pretty exciting day. I started getting emails from people that, hey, congratulations, and, and, uh, and so they said to listen to the radio at 3:30. 3:30 came, and, uh, Paul Douglas, Jordana Green from WCCO, they did a little, uh, thing with their audience, and they did their own taste test, and Paul and Jordana had St. Louis Park and Chaska as their top two, and then they ended up choosing Chaska as their favorite. So it was like, all right, we're onto something. So, winning at, winning at the state fair guaranteed us top four in Duluth, and Duluth is our American Water Works Association annual conference, and so we, we went up there, and, uh, there were four, uh, water professionals from AWWA, one of them being a national, uh, treasurer for the National American Water Works Association, and, uh, in the final four there, Chaska, St. Peter, St. Paul, and Owatonna, and, uh, again, they chose us. And so, uh, that was, that was, uh, quite a fun evening, once, uh, they announced the awards at a, at a, a social gathering, and I gave, uh, one of our engineers from StanTech a high five, and he, we've been working together for a while, and...
I love the pun. Best in glass.
Best in glass, yeah, that's what it, that's what it is. And so, um, winning at Minnesota American Water Works Association basically gives us a, uh, trip to the Nationals, and that, uh, the Nationals is coming up in Denver, Colorado, June 9th through the 12th, and, uh, we're, it's, it's, it's pretty exciting that, that, uh, to be able to go there and, and bring our water. Uh, one of the fun, you know, neat things we had going on, we were doing some pretty serious pumping, so we had all of our wells coming into the plant, and the plant running about as fast as we want to. It was about 7,000 gallons a minute as well, we were pumping when I took these samples. So, is that the recipe? I'm not sure, but, uh, so, just some, some past highlights, uh, city of Bloomington won best in glass, and then, uh, they ended up going to Nationals and winning that in 2015 to 2016, and then in St. Cloud, um, or the, the city of St. Cloud won the state fair and Duluth, and so, they've won, they've done both of them, and so, I guess, our goal is to try to go to Nationals and win that, and then we get...
Trifecta.
And we get the trifecta. Be back.
The crown of water. Be the first city to do all three of them.
Yeah, so, that's, that's it for the, the presentation. I wanted, uh...
Wow. So, is there, and, uh, thank you. Very cool. Yes, very, do we have a trophy case here or in the municipal services building, or where do we?
Well, I'd like to, I hope that they can stay here for a while.
I think, I think they should.
People come to City Hall.
As I say, I think they should be here for a little while.
Yep.
And then ultimately end up, uh, back in your office.
Yeah, and, and so, uh, one thing I wanted to touch on, I don't know if anybody's been by, uh, the water tower, or excuse me, the, uh, the treatment plant, but, uh, this is our backwash tank, and this is our clear well, and if you've been there in the last six months, it's been pretty unsightly. What we ended up doing was we made some decisions, the, the city would maintain that and put, you know, make sure weeds wouldn't grow on things, and I didn't really like that going on, and so we're, we're, uh, moving to, um, a native prairie grass where there's gonna be no chemicals, really no irrigation on it, it's just gonna become a, kind of a, hopefully a pretty, um, area around the treatment plant, give it some color. So, these are just, these are, uh, some little, looks like Blackhead Susan's growing up right now, so, but that's kinda what it looks like now, it's kinda dreary looking.
I kinda saw that, and I kinda figured something like that was happening.
Yeah, I just didn't care much for, you know, herbicides and stuff. There's big, thick rubber membranes and things over the tanks, but it's like, yeah, let's not do anything like that.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's all I have.
So. Go ahead, look.
Every once in a while, I see on TV the ads in that, like, some filter company implying that some municipal's water isn't, isn't safe for drinking, you should get a, get a filter, and, and we better meet state standards, this is as safe as you could possibly get.
State federal, yeah. Safe drinking water act.
Drinking water, not only tastes good, it is safe to drink.
Absolutely.
And it's tested on a regular basis.
Absolutely. Various, uh, multiple, we do a multitude of tests in-house, the Department of Health comes, you know, all year long, and does different, uh, different testing as well, so...
Some water is safe, isn't it tasty to drink, like Chaska water? 'Cause I drink a lot of Eden Prairie water, and it tastes very chlorinated to me.
Okay. See, Eden Prairie, Bloomington, they soften, so it's a di, totally different treatment process.
Doesn't taste as good.
Yeah, it, it truly doesn't. There's been some of the restaurants in there that don't get regular faucet water, because the, it, it truly does not, there's a definite taste difference.
Agreed.
Some people say the calcium and magnesium in the hardness, we have very hard water here. That can help with taste, so, but, we're working hard, and, and, you know, I just wanna give a shout out to the crew. They put in a lot of hours that aren't seen, um, middle of the night shutdowns for businesses and water main breaks and things like that, that go on at all hours, so, uh, they work real hard, and, uh, just wanna, they deserve a lot of credit, so...
Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Hats off to, to Matt and the things that he's done for the water department too, I know since you, I wasn't here when you started in your position that you're in, but I've heard that, um, you've turned it around quite a bit, there's a whole different level of quality and, and, uh, higher standard that's been put, you know, while you've been in your position, so I think, you know, certainly that has a big influence on our ability and people involved in the work. Thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, Matt.
So, before you, before you run, you kinda talked about that, you had everything running at high, so is there different, what makes water better one year versus the other years? It's just, who knows? I mean, you don't do anythi, you can't do any, you guys really don't have the opportunity to, I mean, other than your normal, whatever you...
We're watching, we're watching our, our SCADA system very closely, um, what, what I, what, what could, we have five different wells coming into the water treatment plant, three of those are Mount Simon Hinckley, and that's, those are, the Mount Simon Hinckley, Hinckley Aquifer is kind of a, a, a treasure that you can't get to anymore, it's 800 feet in the ground, and, uh, everybody's drilling into the Jordan now, which is only about 200 to 300 feet in the ground, and so, do, is there different characteristics of the water? Yeah, the, the Jordan is softer, it's got higher manganese, uh, less iron, and the, the Mount Simon has got higher iron and less manganese, so it's, there's a, there's a combination going on, and, um, and just, just those, the, the two days we were pumping, we, we were, uh, ripping water pretty good, 7,000 gallons a minute going out, and, uh, I had to, I'm hoping that's the formula, 'cause we'll use it next year in June.
So, that's what I'm saying, now you gotta remember that come June.
Yeah, we won't forget.
Do you happen to know how many cities around us treat for softness? Because I thought that was pretty rare.
Softening? Uh, Bloomington, Eden Prairie, Minneapolis, St. Paul.
So they soften the water?
They soften water, and, and a couple of those are surface water. So they do softening, and then they do also like microfiltration, which is a, um, a bunch of tubes that the water goes through, it's like, kinda like R O, kind of super type, you know, filters, so, um, those are the main ones that soften.
That's not common, that's why I'm saying...
No, it's not. Iron and manganese removal, like, that's what we do, that's the common treatment process.
I would imagine the softener must be more expensive, isn't it?
It's a, it's a more expensive process, and to, I, I know that when the treatment plant was being designed and, and constructed, it was, I think, tens of millions more to build a softening plant, and everybody in the city had softeners at that point, and so then they'd have to manipulate those softeners as well, because the, you know, the chemistry of the water would change.
Sure, so we are softening or not?
We don't.
We don't, okay. 'Cause I know that's been kinda one of our knocks, our water's pretty hard.
It is, it's extremely hard.
Treatment plant was 14 million? 16, yeah. 16 million. Quite a bit of money.
You don't do 7 million gallons a minute all day long?
7,000 gallons.
7,000, I mean, all day long?
No.
Well, good, 'cause otherwise that'd be 10 million gallons a day.
It's, we're, we can do 12.6 in a day, but, uh, yeah, we can...
Not easy.
No, it's not, it, it would be, it would be a really, really stressful on the wells, um, but, from 4:00 in the morning, 3:00 to 4:00 in the morning until, like, 8:00, we are pedal to the metal in the summer.
Great. Just goes on the sprinkler systems kicking on.
Lot of irrigation going on, yeah.
Should be settling down now.
It is, big time.
After all day.
Yeah, we're pretty much at our normal winter, uh, 2.5 million gallons a day type of a...
How many million?
2.5 million, yeah.
And then peak in summer is?
Six to seven and a half at most, but it, this, this summer was probably six to six five, somewhere in there.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
That's awesome. To everyone.
All right, good night.
Yeah, please share that with the crews, uh, our congratulations and super honors here, and we'll, uh, make sure they get displayed somewhere. So, all right, is there anyone else here under visitor presentation? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on, approving, uh, the previous meeting minutes. Um, again, discussion, if not an entertaining motion to approve the previous meeting minutes. Motion by Councilmember Rowe.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Schultz, approving previous, uh, meeting minutes. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item number seven, which are consent agenda items, um, for anyone uncertain, these are items that just need approval, um, not necessarily discussion, but maybe discussed at any time if someone has a question.
Mayor, I make motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Bowe.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Geisler to approve consent agenda items. Uh, discussion. Nate, I just have one on this limited use, is that just for the trail? Is that what that's about? Are you up to speed on that? Is that?
Seven B.
Seven B.
Oh, sorry.
B is in boy. B is in boy.
So it's the...
Sorry, it's not sure.
Turn across to floor.
Sorry, taking minutes while I'm, uh...
We want accurate minutes, so, yeah.
Kinda, kinda double duty.
Pedestrian bridge.
I, I just, it, it looks like it's that, but I'm just wondering why we had to do that, 'cause are we, 'cause I think we're building a pedestrian bridge along with that interchange.
Yes, we are. Um, I would have to check with Matt Clark to be sure, but I, I think it has to do with pedestrian bridge and trail, 'cause we're, 'cause we're kinda going through the process of maybe which interchange we need to build, but I would have to check with him to be sure.
Quietly, like I said, we're pretty good at just doing agreements, so, okay. All right, anyone else discussion? We have a motion and a second, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item number eight, uh, which is, uh, adopting resolution 2018-128, which is a public hearing, consider certification of delinquent utilities and miscellaneous unpaid fees.
So, Mayor and Councilmembers, this is an item that we do on an annual basis, um, this is really for, um, stormwater fees, uh, that all residents are, are required to pay as part of living for, living in the city of Chaska, so these are dollars that we collect to help maintain our stormwater system. Um, sometimes fees go unpaid for whatever, you know, there, there could be a host of reasons that individuals are able to make that payment, um, but in that case, what we do is we do assess, uh, these outstanding fees against the property, um, and it's, it becomes something that they can pay through their tax bill, um, over time, so that's what we're doing tonight. You have to pull the public hearing anytime you have an assessment, we need to have a public hearing for that to occur, so that's what we're doing tonight. Um, you should have received in your council packet a list of the, of the properties and amounts that would be assessed against them as reasons, uh, if you decide to...
Pretty standard. Yep. Every year. Why is, there's one that's quite a bit higher than anything else on there, you know, why would that one be so high? It's a residential, or are they owners of that complex?
Third one down. Third one down. Do you just want?
Question, yeah, I see it pulled up.
No idea?
I'm not certain. I guess, there's, so there's the fee that everyone has to pay, that can also be, um, you know, other, in Matt's, um, staff report that he has laid out, uh, there can be other things like unpaid mulling fees, alarm fees, connection fees.
Okay.
Um, so in the case of that property, that may be a reason why those other fees are in there. Mostly these are related to the stormwater, but there could be some of those miscellaneous expenses against the property, never mind what not.
All right, thanks. Uh, any other questions up here? So, Mike, we're still having feedback problems?
Yes, still having the feedback issues, sorry.
So, at home, they're just not hearing it, or...
They're hearing it, but it's got a lot of static in it, and that's the problem right now, I'm seriously chasing down what it is. I've looked in all the microphones, it's almost like there's somebody that has something that's creating a static, like a cellphone that's highly static, or, that's all I, I can...
One option that Mike did mention to me, um, could go into recess, or to allow him to reboot the system, um, that's something that he wanted to do.
How, how long of a recess?
Four minutes, I think I can shut the system down and then do a full restart and see if that does the trick.
Well, I think that's reasonable enough, but we should give that a try if you're still having...
Okay, thanks, sorry guys.
Let me, um...
Should we finish this?
We, we are in the middle of a public hearing, so I'd have to finish that out, Mike, and then I'll, I'll give you the, the high side when we're done with that. So, all right, um, I gotta get back on track here, so, no other questions up here?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing up at, uh, 7:20. Um, is there anyone that, uh, is here to speak on behalf of, um, delinquent fees that aren't paid, so, um, I, I offer that on. Not seeing anyone moving, so I'm gonna go ahead and close that public hearing at 7:21. Um, again, further discussion, if not an entertaining motion to approve, uh, 2018-128?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Rowe, adopting resolution 2018-128, which is a public hearing, considering the certification of delinquent utility and miscellaneous unpaid fil, fees. Uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Uh, motion carries. So, uh, we are having some, uh...
Technical difficulties.
...audio problems out there, so we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna take a short recess so that our cable operator can, uh, try to reboot the system, so don't go away, we should be back in about five minutes.
Bigger and better.
Yep, and I got, uh, seven...
They still put that screen that we're having technical difficulties on?
A little. 7:21, so hopefully we're back, but... What, what is her name?
Doug Shire.
having some problems. Michael, is it better? Nope.
I can hear it.
We can still hear it, so, we're not sure why it is, um...
Speak louder.
You're fortunate that we have a rather short meeting tonight, so we won't have to put up with the buzzing all night. I'm just kinda used to it, I think it just happens all the time, buzzing, right?
I didn't hear it till they mentioned it.
I didn't hear it till it went quiet there, so, uh, so we're not hearing it up there, so if there's anybody out there that's got a question, feel, please feel free to, uh, ask us. All right, so I'm gonna move on, um, next is adopting resolution 2018-130, which is accepting the resignation of Councilmember Jay Rowe. Uh, that or Jay, who's gonna go? I don't know how to do this.
I'm gonna watch real closely as to who makes that motion.
Oh! I wasn't supposed to do that, was I? Later! Uh, but anyways...
Follow the standard format, I guess, and I need to introduce this one.
Follow the standard format.
Yes.
So, earlier this morning, we did receive an email, and we sort of knew this was coming, 'cause Jay's been pretty upfront about the fact that he's moving out of his ward, so, um, but this morning, he did submit a formal email, uh, stating that he needs to resign from his council seat, um, and so that's, that's what we're taking up tonight. Um, I think what you also need to do by passing the resolution is state that there will be an opening on the council, which then sets us up to, under the process, to, you know, find a replacement for Jay's seat. Um, how that process will work is it would be an appointment process, so what we'll do is, um, you know, so assuming you all approve this and accept the resignation, everything tonight, we would move forward to post that there's an opening on the council, um, that would allow individuals who are interested to apply. We would plan to leave that opening for about a month, so, you know, through the end of October, um, then at, at which point, we would be in a position at the first meeting in November to begin that process of reviewing applicants, bringing in for interviews, um, with an eye towards hopefully having, you know, being able to make a decision at second meet, meeting in, uh, in, uh, sorry, second meeting in November. Um, naturally, I think the process needs to play out, and so if we need more time, that's an option, but what's important though, according to state statutes, that we're moving through at as quick of a pace as we can, um, if that's, you know, state statute is that vague, so we wanna have a thorough and right process in place, but we also want a way, you know, for any...
Too much, right.
Um, so that's the process that I'll move forward. Um, some people have asked about special election. In this case, since Jay, um, is resigning after filing needs to occur for election, you know, for this upcoming election, we don't have any other election, um, scheduled for until 2020, which would be the end of Jay's term as current man, um, so unless if council were to make a specific... Um, so unless if council were to make a specific action by ordinance, create a special election for his purpose, um, the standard would be, without that vote occurring, would be to move to the appointment process that I just described.
We could do that, but there's obviously a cost involved with helping a special independent election.
And we've, we've gone through this process of appointment of council members in the past as well. So that's, there's nothing we've set the person, making this an appointment process instead of a special election for councilmen.
Could, could they, um, they make a motion on this? Could you make it, make a motion declaring that there is a vacancy effective, uh, Tuesday, October? Is that the...
Wednesday.
Not Wednesday?
Wednesday, October third.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's the resolution that is in your council packet.
Oh, okay.
So by approving the resolution, you are, you are accepting Jay's resignation effective October. And then also declaring it as a vacancy.
Of course, not tonight.
Not Thursday. Yep, yep. And that actually works out well because, you know, we're gonna need a staff a little bit of time in order to prepare those documents to officially, you know, declare that vacancy and everything. So we can do that on our website, we'll post it on social media, we'll also get that notice over to the Herald so that they can post it, you know, in their exhibition as soon as they can. Um, but that also, you know, that gives us a couple of days in order to get those documents in line.
Yeah, I'm kinda figuring it'll probably show up Thursday. Would be my assumption.
This isn't news, Alex. So, do I abstain from voting on this, or do I...
Well, you're still on the council.
It's not a conflict of interest.
Nope.
Seems weird.
Accepting your own resignation.
You could even make the motion if you wanted.
Yeah.
That would be funny. It's a four to one vote, Alex, you ready? Four one.
So, so, uh...
You've caused enough confusion for us, Chris. So Nate, and Luke.
I gotta talk to Luke.
Okay, yeah, I have a question for Luke as well. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, I, my quest, I just wanna make sure that I understand that we need to make... So we, we have, uh, the motion on the floor to accept the resignation. Then we need to have, make another motion declaring that there is...
No, no.
You could just amend the...
Nate mentioned that it's all, by accepting the resignation, it's all in the...
So you're, what, what you need to do is the motion can be to approve or adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash one thirty. In that resolution, it accepts Jay's resignation and it also declares that there's an opening on the council.
Okay, are we good with that?
So really by adopting that resolution, you accomplish what you're talking about.
Well, you look at that, Luke, um...
It doesn't say in the statute, but the league says you should be declared that there is a vacancy.
Which is what the resolution does.
But if that's already in a resolution...
Just accepting it doesn't declare it as a resolution, really.
Let me just pull up the resolution.
It's kinda like that poor guy that's waiting to have the electricity run through his body. Waiting, something's not right.
Okay, so what it says is, whereas the city, the Chaska City Council has received the resignation of Councilor Jay Rowe effective on October third, twenty eighteen, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Chaska, Minnesota as follows. One, the council accepts Councilor Jay Rowe's resignation as described above. Two, the council declares that a vacancy exists on the council effective of October third, twenty eighteen. Therefore be it resolved, blah, blah, blah.
So you're good?
Sure.
Right.
So, I have a question. Several years ago, I was told that if a vacancy occurs on the council, if there's more than two years remaining in that term, you must hold a special election, but if it's less than two years, you can choose to appoint or have a special election. Is that true, or is that...
Subdivision, this is for twelve oh two subdivision two A. If the vacancy occurs before the first day to file affidavits of candidacy, which is what Nate... For the next regular city election and more than two years remain in the unexpired term, a special election shall be held either before the next regular city election and the appointee shall serve until the qualification of his successor. So, once it's, if, if the resignation is not before the date for filing, opening for the next election.
Gotcha, thank you.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, we kinda had, looked at that.
Thank you for the clarification, okay. Wanna make sure we do it correctly?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
One other thing, Nate, I noticed on the agenda, it says it's, um, twenty eighteen dash one twenty-eight, but in here, it says one thirty. And it's not filled in on the top row of the resolution, it's all...
Twenty eighteen dash one twenty-eight is the resolution we just passed.
Yeah. Yeah, mine says one thirty.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, gotcha, gotcha. It's just that it wasn't filled in on this top row.
The one that's in the mayor's packet assigned does have that.
It does, okay.
All right. Thoughts, Mr. Rowe, council member? Well, I was gonna maybe save it till the end, but...
Well, you can do it now. You can do it how, um...
Your preference.
Yeah.
I would say with, with sadness, it's, you know, that we accept this, but it's, it's been a pleasure of serving with you all these years and I, I wanna thank you for all of your effort on behalf of the City of Chaska, not only on the council for two different times, but also you've served, I know, for many years in various capacities under the Southwest Transit Commission as well and looked out for the best interests of residents of Chaska. So I say thank you for all of your effort and your passion and, uh, it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, absolutely, I can't say it any better than what Greg has done. It's really kinda comfortable, you've definitely put your effort in, uh, serving this community. Now, as I said, in the council, in two different terms, with Southwest Board and various boards and committees, uh, prior to it as well. So, again, it's been a pleasure seeing your insights and getting information and seeing how you go through your processes and it's, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you and wish you the best.
Thanks, Chris.
I'd like to say too that, um, being my first term on the city council, um, you've been so helpful, very supportive, and, um, I appreciate so many years that you've put in serving the community. All the committees you're on, Southwest Transit, which is so important to us. Um, you just, you really have a way of seeing the whole picture and I'm honored to have you. Really, you've served me.
Thanks, Chris.
So, I, and I just, I, there may be a little bit of confusion out there over what's happening. So, Councilmember Rowe, um, is moving out of, out of our ward, we have a ward system. So if he moves out of his ward, he can allow him to hold that ward spot, but he's still within the City of Chaska. He's just in a different ward, so I wanted to clarify that a little bit, what's kinda, uh, going on here, why... Sometimes I'm just wondering why you do, you know, why you're calling now. It's just, his house became ready, there was uncertainty when moving. Anytime you build a new house, you never know when that time is. And that's why it kinda came quicker, that, you know, all of a sudden, he was able to. And he, and he had, in the meantime, his lease expired on his house that he was in currently, and so he just wanted to be upfront and say, um, hey, I'm out of my ward and, um, council meetings tonight. So it was, uh, so that's why I was brought onto the agenda tonight and done that way, which I, you know, I commend Councilmember Rowe for, for his upfront. He's been upfront about this all along, he just was never quite sure. As we all know, if you, well, I've never built one and I don't wanna build a house, but, uh, we never know when that time comes. And again, that goes back to him wanting to stay on as long as he possibly can because I, I know for a fact, we've had many conversations. He enjoys what he does here, he does a very good job, he's, uh, not afraid to speak his mind. And, um...
Filtered, right, Mark?
Filtered. We've had that conversation about filtering. But, um, it's important that, you know, that's a good thing about our council that I feel strong about. It's okay for people to disagree. We've disagreed on things, but you know what? Tomorrow, business has to go on and we move forward, and I think that's what's really been a strong strength of this council and I appreciate that because I, I think, uh, Jay is one that he, you know, he's, he likes, like I said, he likes to speak his mind and he's, sometimes he's different than how others feel, but you know what? That's okay, I think that that's important that we should... Still, we can all get along and, and it's a good next meeting, you know? And that's important and I will just share, there's not much left to share, that hasn't been said, but I too, you know, appreciate you, you, you've helped me in different ways and, uh, made my role easier, uh, because of some of your past experience here. Has helped me to say, hey, we've done that in the past, or that's okay, it's not because sometimes I question things about how we do it and why we do it. And, uh, and that's another thing that's a strong attribute of... Paul and I are the new ones and, you know, kinda, and, uh, so it helps that all three of you here have that ability to have that and to share those things with us. So, um, I appreciate that and, and, um, you know, your service to the city has been... How many years is it between the two terms?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. It's a long time, so, um, I don't think people realize how much time that takes to put fourteen years in on the council. Um, so, I will just close in saying thank you for everything and I'm sure our paths will always cross because you're still here in town and we'll see, uh, different things and, and... Yeah.
Seems like this probably appropriate time versus the end of the meeting. It's kinda funny when I left the house, uh, as I've gotten older, I tend to tear up easier at emotional things. But Heidi said, just don't, don't cry, Jay, and I said, I'll try not to.
I'll poke a baby if he starts crying.
Yeah, exactly. But, uh, you know, the mayor touched on it and Heidi and I had the opportunity to, as I said in the paper, build our dream home. And, uh, you know, she's stuck by my side for all fourteen years. I mean, we've been married for twenty-seven, but fourteen years on the council and many different elections and everything, and it's something that, um, that we wanted to do, you know? And so when we started looking, you know, to build, because we could pretty much go anywhere where we wanted to go, um, you know, we looked out on Lake Minnetaka and we looked at different places. And we were driving back one day and I said, I can't leave Chaska. I said, it doesn't make any sense. Why would I leave the community that I love? You know what I mean? Why, I, why would I do that? And, um, I always believed that, you know, God has a hand in things. She said, well, let's just drive through Cheval and just go take a look through Cheval. And I said, well, honey, it's all built out, you know, there's nothing left over there. And so we drove back on Caballo Pass and there's this one lot sitting there. And I said, well, that's odd. So I called Dave Igle, you know, who is the developer out there, and I said, David, I said, is that lot just unbuildable? No, no, it's owned by a guy, I won't say his name on camera, but lives out on the town course and here's his phone number. So I called him and he said, uh, we were just talking about selling that lot. He said, if you wanna have an offer to me by tomorrow, you know, let me know. And so that's really how it came about. So we get to remain in Chaska, which is, which is great. But, you know, the sad part is, is that, you know, it does interfere with my seat. And, um, you know, I, I wanted to talk a little bit, I'm gonna just spend, just indulge you for a few minutes.
Absolutely.
You know, so many times up here, um, uh, people talk about, you know, how special we are as a community. And I think sometimes the public says, oh, well, that's what the mayor and the council says and, and the staff. But we really are, you know? I had the opportunity to serve on another commission, you know, where there's different cities and, and we do think differently here in Chaska. And I think it's been the testament, you know, of this council and, and previous councils and, uh, you know, our founding fathers of this community gave us great building blocks. And we have such a beautiful area, you know, along the Minnesota River, we have a wonderful downtown. There's just so many things that we have going for us in this community that I think a lot of communities don't have. And that came from the people that have lived here, the people that have put their sweat and money and investment in everything in this community. It's come from councils, you know, uh, like Bob Repke, taking a risk, building a community center, you know, and doing things like that. And, um, and so we've had great leadership in the, in the staff, uh, you know, from Dave Pocorni to, you know, Matt Potarowski to Kevin Ringwall to Nate. Uh, you know, I mean, there's so many, I don't wanna miss names, you know, Kevin. You know, and, and that also is a big factor. You know, another factor is our police department, our fire department, second to none in the state. You know, we have a, our leaders and both, the chief, uh, you know, Scott's a personal friend and, you know, I've known Tim for many years, our fire chief, and those guys' heart and soul is in this community. And so I think that's what makes it special, is you have people that really have ownership in, in this community and live here and want it to be the best. And so, um, you know, I, I touched on the staff and it's been an absolute pressure, uh, pleasure serving with the staff. I mean, um, you know, we don't agree, you know, it's, it's very minimal when we don't agree, but the fact that the respect that I've always gotten from the staff, I can't think of one time where I felt like they disrespected anything, even though, even if I was blatantly wrong, which was a lot of times. Um, you know, they, they always made me feel like I was listened to. They didn't impugn my, my thinking or my judgment, and they helped me understand why we may need to do a little bit differently than maybe the way I was thinking. And so, so that's been a, a great thing. And then to the council. You know, I, I've had the opportunity, you know, you look up on the wall there to serve with many different, different people up here. And, you know, Bob Repke and I, you know, over the years have developed, developed a great friendship. And, and I've learned from Bob, um, and, and, you know, I served under Gary Van Iel and, you know, Gary's heart, you know, so into the city. And I learned a lot from Gary, I learned a lot about, uh, more than you think I learned from Gary about just life in general and, and how to conduct yourself and, and what you should do. And then we got this, this guy here, Mark, uh, you know, that, uh, you know, I, I mean, I feel like, you know, the people ask me all the time, they say, well, you and Mark ran against each other in 2010, how is that? You know, sitting up here, and I said, well, it's actually really great. You know, I said, Mark has given me the ability to, to speak and say what's on my mind and he tells me to filter when maybe I'm going a little bit too far. And, uh, uh, he's a great mayor. I mean, we're really lucky to have Mark up here and it's been an honor serving with him. And, and to my fellow council members, um, Chris, you're gonna be going through this in a few months and you'll feel what I'm feeling tonight, you know? I mean, it was your decision not to run, it was my decision to move, and so that's, that's part of it. But, um, it, there is, you know, it's, people were asking me at the office, they, and they knew it was my last case. They said, how does it feel? And I said, well, I kinda feel like I was punched in the gut today. You know, I, I don't know why, just, just didn't have the normal steam that I have and it's because I'm leaving something that I truly love, you know? And you're gonna feel that, and I wish you the best and thank you for your years of service here and, uh, you've done a great job as a council member and I appreciate your, the way you think and the way you process your thoughts, you know? And it's, it's helpful and it, it helps me to, you know, when I'm thinking of making a decision, I listen to what you're saying because there's things maybe that I didn't catch. And I think that's important for future, future, future council members to have that same quality. And Greg? I wish you the best in the election, I'll be careful not to be partisan up here, but... I'll say the residents of forty-seven B would be fortunate to have you representing them.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, I don't know if I've met a man that cares more about people than you.
Thank you.
And, uh, so I wish you the best. PG? Paula? Paula, I always equate Paula to being the closest to, um, Councilmember Bob Lindell as anybody, because Bob used to take copious notes, Paula makes tons of notes. She reads through her council packet through every single word, she catches everything, you know, that may not be right in there. She, uh, is up on ordinances and, and different things and how we're supposed to do things and I really appreciate your level and your attention to detail in this role because I can tell you really care and I can tell that this is important to you and you wanna do the right things, you wanna make the right decisions. So I appreciate all that hard work. So, and Luke? You're gonna outlast me on this council, I never thought it to happen, but you are. And Nate, you know, I've appreciated getting to know you and work with you and it's been great. And, um, it's unfortunate that Matt isn't here and I knew that was gonna be, but I think the world of Matt, you know, and I think he's doing a solid job with the city and, um, you know, I, I wish you guys... The city's in great shape. I mean, that, that's another reason and, and, you know, kind of summing up here, you know, I think as people look at this open seat, because we're gonna be posting it, we're gonna be looking for people to, you know, put their name on the line. And, uh, and all I can say is, outside of being a husband, um... Now you're gonna get me emotional. A grandfather.
That's a biggie.
I knew I was gonna, that was good. So Paula said that, thanks Paula.
You're welcome.
It has been the pleasure of my life to serve.
There you go.
And I love this community, and it's gonna go on, and it's gonna be great, and it's gonna continue to be great.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's it, I'll end on that note, how's that?
Very good.
I, I totally agree with you that there has been such a strong foundation set for us to do this, and that was always my goal, and I said it when I was running for mayor, I said, "The ship's been always going in the right direction." My, my, my job was to keep that ship going straight, and I think we've been doing that, I think we've been giving that good guidance to move forward for whoever sits in these seats whenever that time comes that we all will step away or whatever happens. So, I totally agree, and, and closing, again, I'm just gonna say thank you, I know your heart has always been in this city, you've always, I could always tell that, and I get asked that all the time too, the same thing about, about me and you, and I said, "I can guarantee you that his heart is what is right for this city," and I believe that, and I will tell you that, that that is, you are absolutely spot on about that, that your heart is doing the right thing for the city of Chaska, so that's greatly appreciated by, I'm sure, all us here, without a doubt, and, and many people out there that are listening are...
One point two million.
One point two.
We may be down to one million because of the feedback we had and the buzz right here, but still.
We lost a couple.
Exactly.
Notice the feedback's gone now.
By the way, I'm sorry to interrupt real quick, the static stopped when Jay hit the dais.
Nice.
Still fixing problems, right?
On the way out.
It was probably the screw loose in his head there. Night. Well, that's good, I'm glad the static's gone.
I just wanna, Matt, he'd be talking, and...
Till midnight.
Yeah, till midnight, so I can definitely, you know, shorten up a little bit, but I know he's disappointed that he can't be here, and, you know, you mentioned that, Jay, that you feel likewise, so I have no idea what he would've said, but I do know that he would've thanked you, and he, and he did, I know he agrees with, with Mark, and I do too, that it's clear that your heart's in the right place, and when you're, you're serving the community, you know, that's what you're thinking about, are those, you know, how can you make decisions that are gonna set us down that right path? So, and with me working with you for, you know, only a couple of years now, but, you know, that's one thing that I've really observed and appreciated learning from you is, you know, how do you really put your heart into the community, and how do you think about that when you're making decisions? And I was telling Jay on the phone earlier today, you know, from a staff perspective, all you can really hope for is that you're working with council members and a mayor that have their heart in the best interest of the community, and that they make their desires clear and understood, so that is, from a staff perspective, when you're making decisions on a day-to-day basis, you, you have a clear, you know, path forward and understand when you're making those decisions that, there's decisions that the council can support. And, you know, it's never been unclear to me what Jay's perspective is and what his thoughts are on a topic, and that, and that's true from all of you really, so that makes my job a heck of a lot easier, because I can be talking with folks and making decisions or, you know, making proposals that, you know, are ultimately gonna come in front of you and have some level of confidence that, you know, I'm on the right path. So, I appreciate that from all of you, and you certainly make it a lot easier for us to, you know, move those blocks forward that you're all kinda setting, you know, to build from, so, so thank you, thank you, Jay, and thank, thank all of you, I appreciate working with everyone, so.
Very good.
Thank you, Nate.
Luke, you got anything?
Well, I can't, you know, more accolades than already been given, but I can say in the fifty years that I've been here, that I can count on less than both of my hands the time the council made a decision, a political decision, and not what is in the best interest of the city of Chaska. And for, I don't know, that means literally thousands of decisions that a council has made in fifty years, and there's less than ten times that they made a political decision, it's just, I think it just speaks volumes into why this council and why the city of Chaska is where it is. It's not like some of these communities you hear around, the neighboring communities, they're fighting and this and that, but if, you know, having meaningful discussion is what's in the best interest of the city of Chaska. You arrive at the right decision all the time except for less than ten in fifty years. I think that's just wonderful, and you're part of that, Jay.
Thank you.
That probably means that a couple of them are your fault.
Yeah. How many of those ten? Yeah, appreciate that.
Well, any last comments from up here? I, I just wanna close with our process again, but I'll open it up to after Jay's comments.
You know, I actually, I'll expound on a point a little bit during that, I think Jay kinda really touched on it, you know, and it's kinda been touched on, we all have a strong belief that we're doing, making decisions based on what we think is best for Chaska, not always necessarily seeing that decision eye to eye in the same energy, we've had some things out, but I, I think that what makes this has been such a successful council is the fact that, you know, we, we talk it out, we settle it, we make the final decision, and we move forward, and, and, and put forth what we think is the best thing for Chaska. And I think Veterans Park is an excellent example of that, you know, I think when that is finally done and complete, that's gonna be a beautiful addition to the park system, and, and I think our ability to kind of move on from those points, but then also, when we see eye to eye, really remain locked and focused in moving those processes and projects forward, I think is really is what made this work well for us. And again, you know, like I said, although our opinions haven't always met, it's always been a level of respect in the discussions, and, and it's, and it's actually been very entertaining, just, actually watch us both grow, you obviously had more experience than council before when I came on, but, you know, a lot of learning through that process and a lot of growing for all of us, and it's, it's been interesting to see that path go through.
I was saying to Nate earlier today, I said, you know, when you first get elected, you know, you think, "I've got all these thoughts and ideas, and I've got a seat, and I've got a microphone, and I'm gonna get up there and I'm gonna just..." And then you find out that that's not how this works, and, and, you know, you have your opinions on things, and, but you learn really fast, and that's my, you know, advice to whoever decides to wanna put their name out here for this seat, is that, you know, if I had to go back eighteen years ago, I would go back and I would, I would have listened more than I did. I didn't listen much when I first got on, Luke was here, you know, looking at me cross-eyed, but I didn't listen enough, and I think that's, that's a key, is to, to listen and learn and understand, you know, other people's perspectives, because you're one vote, there's five of us up here, and you're one vote, and so you have to work together, and if you don't, you're gonna have chaos like we've seen in cities around Chaska. And that, as Luke said, that has been really one of the great, you know, attributes to this city councils that have, you know, current and past, has been that they've been able to work together, you know, even though they may disagree on things, it, it comes together. And lastly, you know, I've had so many people ask me about Fireman's Park and the, you know, the redevelopment, and, you know, the last was when we had the USA Curling, you know, here, Curling Night in America.
That's your wife saying, "Stop."
Stop crying. Yeah, so, but, you know, they, I said, the, I, the reason, the way we got this done is all this, this council, we worked together, and, and, you know, we had disagreements, you know, on the bridge, or should this be, you know, things like that, we, we did disagree on things, but at the end of the day, we, we held firm and said our end goal is to make a quality project, and we never lost sight of that, and it would've been so easy to go off into tangents and we would've had a mess. And so that's, that's my last words, that's my recommendation to anybody that wants to sit up here, is listen, learn, and have respect, and understand people's perspectives. I think if you do all that, you'll be a great council member.
And the thing I most appreciate about this council is that we can agree to disagree and see things a little bit different, but yet learn from each other still. I mean, each project in front of us is new, and we work together in the end, what's best for Chaska as a whole, might represent award, but we're, we still, every vote has to be what's best for Chaska as a whole, and we do listen and learn from each other, and that's been, you never, I never felt disrespected by anybody for having a different opinion, and learned a lot from all the guys, but you, you're the most outspoken one, and I, and I appreciate that too, though.
Shorter meetings.
Yes, you get right to the point, and I like that, so, you're the best.
Well, thanks, Paula.
Thank you.
All right, before we go ahead and vote on this, I just wanna go through the process one more time for anybody that maybe came in late this winter, what's going on is, is that, so with Councilmember Rowe's seat being vacant as of Wednesday...
That's correct, October third.
There will be applications out for, to fill the vacancy, at least I assume that's a roll, yeah, well, that's a roll, I assume, right? I don't see any discussion or go the other way, but, and then that, that will be open till right around November first, somewhere in there, and then at that point, applications will be gathered, we'll figure out a interview process and times, and, and then hopefully by the second council meeting, we'll be able to make an appointment and, and we'll move on, and then that term would be, so twenty-four, twenty-five months roughly, by the time, and then they would be rerunning again, so it'd be just to fill out the term of Ward four. So, all right. So with that, last call, if not, I would entertain a motion to accept Jay's resignation effective October fourth.
Mr. Mayor, motion regretfully to ex, motion to accept the resignation, sorry.
Okay, so I have a, a motion by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Geisler to, again, accept, well, it's Resolution twenty-eighteen dash one-three-zero, accepting the resignation of Councilmember Jay Rowe, well, and I wanna be clear and add to that, that he is moving out of his ward, that is the only reason that he is stepping down, so, all right, further discussion?
And who's my new council member, just so I know who to call?
I don't know, you'll find out in November.
Yeah, exactly, things could change, a lot of things could change up here come November.
Did you wanna add to that motion, Councilmember Schultz, about Ann declaring the vacancy?
It's in, it's in the resolution.
Sure, that's...
And just what, it's, okay, gotcha.
So, all right.
So the only place better than Ward four is Ward two, I guess. All right, I'm ready.
Anything else? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and because of this vacancy, we do have one other piece that we wanna do, so Jay was actually is, was the current chair, is it chair or president? Chair of the Southwest Transit Commission, so he does have to step down from that, we had kinda looked into the fact of maybe leaving him there because we can have an outside, we already have an outside person, so it has to be a council member, so we need to appoint someone to fill his slot, and I, I did talk to Councilmember Rowe and said that they've got some things going, so it'd be good to get that slot filled as soon as we can, so we're gonna go ahead and do that, and...
Mind if I make a couple of comments?
No, no, absolutely. There isn't anything you were gonna introduce on this, was there?
Nope, you covered everything I would've said.
So, so my existing term ends twelve-thirty-one of eighteen, and so I thought, you know, you know, through this process and who I think would be, you know, personally best to serve out these next three meetings, the next three months, 'cause there's, there's a lot to learn, you know, I thought, well, Councilmember Bowe might be a good one because he has served, understands how it works, but he's in the midst of a major campaign and doesn't have any extra time, Councilmember Schultz is departing at the end of the year, and, and Paula's got, what you just got appointed to something. So, so my recommendation was to appoint the mayor to this post, and other reasoning is, is that Mayor Denny Loffenberger serves from Chan Assen, and Eden Prairie, you have Brad Aho and, and Ron Chase, and they're both running for mayor, so, so I think...
Mike Webb is kinda...
And Mike's, and Mike's there too, so the other cities, Chan and Eden Prairie, have gone to two elect, we still feel like it's nice having somebody, and we have Bob Repke who...
Kind of like an elected.
And Nate is not, his title is not elected, but is elected, so, there, so I care an awful lot, you know, I've been a part of that organization for a long time, it's a, it's a class organization filled with just great people, and so I, that would be my recommendation, is, is that Mark serve out the end of this term, and then the future council in January can decide what they wanna do.
And, and certainly Nancy was, you know, served for many years as the mayor as well.
Yeah, Nancy Taralukin's stepped down at the beginning of the year, she's retiring from mayor of Eden Prairie here in December, so...
I think that's an insightful proposal.
Well thought out.
Well thought out, and I would agree with that one hundred percent.
Was yours a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Was yours a second?
Absolutely.
All right, is there further discussion?
Oh, it's a great suggestion.
It's got to be.
All right, so, apparently I don't have nothing to do.
So that's all right, just to be clear, in the form of, before we make the vote, just to be clear, this appointment would be effective October third.
That's right, October, it's Wednesday, it's effective.
To the end of this year?
When I fish, no, it, it, he will officially be on the commission as of Wednesday, when, when I step down officially from my seat.
And I would have been honored to serve in that capacity, but you're right, my hands and plates are pretty full now. So, would he serve then as the chair, as you have been, or will the vice chair step into that role?
No, and that's something that they'll have to discuss, because we generally in the past, with treasurer, vice chair and chair, we've always had elected people in those roles, I don't think in the bylaws or joint powers it says that has to be, but, but I think that they prefer it to be that way, and so I would highly recommend, you know, I don't know what Lynn will wanna do with that, but I would highly recommend if we can have a Chaska representative as one of the officers, that would be beneficial, so...
What did you say the term, your term expires the end of this year?
It does, my, my, even, come, come hell or high water, my term is...
But that was just as a chairperson only, though.
Or a chair on the, chair on the board.
Then we, we, it would have to be...
You would have to point in January anyway.
You're just filling that for the rest of the year.
Yeah, that point in January.
We, we went through the, you know, the stair stepping process because we were finding that through the years, it had kinda melded together, and so we were having like in years, three or four people leaving the commission, which is, you know, really not a good thing. Change is good, and I'm all for that, but, you know, when you start, you know, talking about two or three commissioners leaving at once, it's, it's a void, so, so we did that, and Bob, I think,'s got another maybe a year or two years, and mine ended right now, so.
Okay, December. Well, I, and I just wanna say that after we have a motion by Councilmember Rowe, second by Councilmember Schultz, to appoint me to that, I, I just wanna say, I appreciate the confidence, and I will be more than happy to serve in that commission, 'cause I agree with you, the Southwest Transit is a, is a great organization, and so I, I can see that would be nothing but good coming out of it, and that will be, that's good exposure for me to see, and the good thing is, I know most of the players and probably fit in there halfway okay, so.
Yep.
Big shoes to fill, but I'll do my best, I will do my best, so, further discussion, if not, we'll go ahead and move forward. Sounds like we're good, so, all right, so we have a motion, second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Now, I didn't wanna say it then, but I found that Southwest Transit actually takes more of my time sometimes than everything else.
It's too late, too late now.
Thanks, I knew you'd get the last word in. All right, we're gonna move forward with bills, anyone have a question regarding a bill, if not, an entertaining, a motion to pay the bills?
Motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Geisler, second by Councilmember Rowe to pay the bills, discussion. Hearing none, Nate, we co-roll.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Geisler?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell?
Yes. Right, moves us on to other business, let's start with Councilmember Schultz tonight.
I have nothing to discuss.
Councilmember Bowe?
Well, I would just say that last Saturday was a, a busy day in downtown Chaska with the Fall Festival at Guardian Angels and with the block party on...
Fall Festival at Guardian Angels and with the Block Party on Second. Good crowd in spite of some cold wind. It was a good crowd, and folks seemed to be having a lot of fun. So I wanted to just thank everyone for, you know, tons of volunteers and lots of folks who took time to come down with family, saw lots of children there with moms and dads and grandpas and grandmas. Nice to see all that. And secondly, I wanted to remind folks that October 14th, there will be a pancake breakfast Sunday morning at Guardian Angels, put on by the Knights of Columbus, so several different varieties of pancakes, and there'll be eggs and sausage and different types of syrup, so, boy, if you, if you leave hungry, it's nobody's fault but your own. So that's on Sunday, the 14th of October, from 8:00 AM to noon in the Guardian Angels School Gymnasium.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you. Councilmember Geisler?
Just a couple of things that I, there was a notice put out today about, to be heads up for tomorrow, about some lane closures on Bavaria Road. It's going to be reduced down to one lane from 86th Street to Hill Point Lane, and from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So it's still probably part of the landscaping and the finishing touches that they're putting on each of the double turn areas, et cetera. So, but they said it's also weather and schedule permitting, so they will have flaggers there, so just please, just be very cautious going through that area. And, and then just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the opening of Bavaria Downs, that the mayor and I were there for the ribbon cutting, and it's, it's just an amazing property. I think they're going to do really well. They've already hosted several weddings, but it was a really nice get-together, open house, et cetera, so. That was on the 18th. So they, you can look them up under Bavaria Downs on the web, they also have a Facebook page, but they do offer some other services other than just weddings, but they did a beautiful job of rehabbing it.
If I can touch on that a little bit, so I talked to some people that are part of that planning group and stuff, and they said that you watched that that place will be getting, probably be the number one wedding venue for sure in the state, and if not across the country. And they said that this one gal that I talked to, she told me that she's worked a lot of wedding venues, this is by far one of the nicest wedding venues she's ever been in. So it'll be really interesting to see how that plays out as we move forward. But I mean, I totally agree with Councilmember Geisler that that, it's a phenomenal use of that piece of property to keep all of nature's beauty intact and still utilize it as, as a business.
Yes.
And not 250 homes like it probably would have been otherwise, so.
They set up just that beautiful, what am I trying to say, the outside venue for putting an outdoor wedding, and the lakes behind it, and, oops, sorry. Sorry, Mike. The lakes are behind it, and the wildlife out there, but 279 acres that are virtually untouched. It's just gorgeous out there.
It's a gem.
But I've never seen a roof on a house like that, and what they said was, it's the only one in the United States, and it's a river, what do they call it, Mark? River, river ripple or something, and it was all...
Steamed cedar shingle or something?
Cedar shakes, and it's, it's like, supposed to look like a river.
Four million dollars for the roof alone, yeah.
So I couldn't take my eyes off that thing.
Pretty incredible.
It was absolutely beautiful, and they've done a gorgeous job of the inside, and they built a, a large ballroom outside for wedding parties and receptions, and they had a band there, and the acoustics were even good, and it was just beautiful to walk around that property, so. And they have some future plans for it that they'll announce down the road, but wow, I believe it'll be number one, Mark, I do. So, but that's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Luke, anything?
Nothing other than, you're on the Southwest Transit, don't let Lynn Semich resign.
We just got his contract put together, he's going to be there another four years, so.
Oh, he is?
Is he?
Yeah.
I thought he was going to go.
No, he's going to stay, and he'll, and he'll retire at that point.
Congratulations on that.
Yeah. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. I'm going to, I got a couple of things, and I'll let you close. Okay. Nate, can we talk to MinDOT about the left turn arrow on 61 heading west? That is so dim.
Yeah.
It's horrible. There's, every time you're sitting there, somebody's honking at cars, and then cars are running through all the lights. I don't know what it's going to take, but they got to do something to fix that. I've mentioned this before in the past, but it's just gotten worse. If it's sunshine out, you can't even see that light. It's terrible. And then I think we've touched on this, but I know the Dollar Tree just opened up in the Brickyard Shopping Center. It's created a tremendous amount of traffic in that area, which is, I think, an awesome thing. That's, I think that's a really good fix for that area in downtown, so welcome to them. I stopped in there, they were so busy, I left. It was just, that's a good problem, and maybe they didn't have enough help, but I won't touch on that. And then one of the last things, we, park staff and myself met with the veterans group over at Veterans Park, and things are moving along well. They're starting a plan, there is going to be the official opening, ribbon cutting, dedication, whatever you care to call it, on November 11th at 2:00. Kevin, our, was there as well, our communications, and there's more, we kind of talked the first phases of what they want to do, they're trying to put everything together, getting their speakers lined up. It's, you know, it's kind of their day to do it, but we're just helping them, guiding them through the process. So we're going to meet again on the 15th, I think, yeah, before the next council meeting, and I hope to give you more of an update that we'll be all locked in. But right now, it's for sure set for November 11th, which is actually Veterans Day. The observed holiday would be Monday following that. But it's going to be 2:00 right out the park, you know, hopefully we can have a 45-degree day at least, 50 to 60, it's wonderful, and sun, and no wind, no wind. But we're going to have a dedication. Kevin told them they need to keep it under 30 minutes for sure, 20 is even better. And then the VFW, everyone's welcome to walk over to the VFW club, and they're going to have some late hors d'oeuvres and snacks and whatever. So keep that in mind, and more to come, just watch things as, as we move forward. And lastly, I think the council is, is going to stop over at the Legion tonight for maybe an adult beverage, and everyone that's listening and whatever is welcome to stop by and wish Jay well. And I do want to note that there are no city funds being used over there, this is...
I already said Legion.
Legion.
Oh, so it's just different size.
We're switching it from the other location, because there's Bingo going on, and there will be kind of...
Kenner Law would, okay.
So.
And this is at our own expense?
This is at our expense. No city dollars will be spent.
With no excess consumption.
At his expense.
Well, it's maybe Jay's expense, but anyways, all are welcome if you want to stop over there. We'll be going over as, when the meeting concludes here tonight. So with that, I'm going to ask for last call from anyone.
I have one other thing. You mentioned Dollar Store, and, you know, good to see the good turnout there. I hear talk now about Play It Against Sports coming to Chaska?
Yeah, I saw that.
Good.
It's on, it's on Facebook galore, but it's also on their website, Play It Against Sports website, so.
Up in the comments where the old party store was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That's, I think, that'd be a good addition as well.
Absolutely.
Good addition.
Good point. I did see that.
All right, with that, I'm turning it over to Mr. Rowe.
Well...
And don't talk too long.
No, but I, I got one thing I want to say. I just want to thank the people of Chaska, you know, for, for allowing me to sit up in this seat. Truly been an honor and a privilege, and it's been awesome, so. With that said, I have a motion to adjourn.
That's all you're going to say?
That's it.
Do we want to make it one final row, Bo, but I will do a, I'll do the motion to adjourn?
Get a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by, yeah. A motion by Councilmember Bo and a second by Mayor Winchett. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Bo, same sign. We are adjourned.
Fine job. See you next week.